Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for March 10, 2022. It's 2:30, and we're in council chambers, which is nice to be back. We've been back for a couple of meetings now, and COVID certainly has been a major challenge over the last two years, and we're hoping that we'll be able to see our way out of this crisis as we move forward. So I'll call the meeting to order, and Item Two on the agenda is land acknowledgement. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional lands of the Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item Three, additions/deletions to the agenda. Counselor, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? No. Having said that, I'll look for an approval of the agenda. Counselor Cushing moves. Secundar, Counselor Durkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Item Five, declarations of any conflicts of interest. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to presentations, and I'm very pleased to have Phil DeMill into talk about the Coal Shed Music Festival. It's always a success downtown, and looking forward to coming back, Mr. DeMill. So I'll have you.
The one tap, and that does it?
Yes, I recognize it. Okay. Thank you very much for giving me some time. I understand I have 10 minutes of presentation, and the rest is question and answer? Correct. That's fine. So I purposely designed it, so I wrote down a list of points, hoping that I wouldn't overlook something major on my way home, think, oh, I forgot that. I'll try to rip through these as quickly as I can, and then whatever questions you have, please feel free to ask, and if I can't answer them, I'll find the answer. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, you had asked me a question in the beginning. The festival started in 2007. It was a result of discussions that had gone on with the Yarmouth Town Council over the previous 12, 15 months, I suppose, and the thought at the time probably was a result of my discussion with some of the members at the time, because I said, you've got a beautiful waterfront here, and nothing is happening with it. Can we possibly do something? I'll try to help out in whatever way I can, and basically, they said, you've got a big mouth, so why don't you try to do something about it? So I said, okay, I will. And the deal was from the beginning, even though there's some controversy over this part of it, I might as well tell you, the deal from the beginning was that they would pay for the sound system and Soundman if I did the rest. Fair enough, I said. Now, I realize, in fairness to them, it has gone from a two-day event to a nine-day event, and therefore, that's the point of controversy, I guess. But anyway, I want to give you that as background. It was not the Yarmouth Development Corporation, in spite of what some people may tell you. It was the Yarmouth Town Council. Anyway, I'll move on after that. It now involves 90 hours of live entertainment and over 200 musicians. That's from the previous session that we had two years ago. Unfortunately, the last two years, we had to cancel at the last minute, as many of you know, because of COVID. And then, of course, last year, on top of it all, my wife had a stroke, which has really added to the list of barriers. But at any rate, we move on, and my phone has not stopped for the last month and a half, people wanting to be a part of the festival. And I'm not making that up. I'm getting calls from everywhere. So it's certainly not a hard job to fill out the nine days. It should be longer, but it also gets costly once you get beyond that point. The things that are included in the festival at this point, we have, obviously, the main stage, which starts just at the lunch hour and goes through roughly 10, 10:30 at night, we're finished up, about 10 hours of live entertainment every day for nine days in total. Also, we have kitchen parties going on at Rutter's tent and also in the Killam building. We have songwriting circles. We've had some professional songwriters come in and do some great workshops with people, and we have some other music workshops dealing with maintenance of instruments and building instruments and all sorts of things of that nature. And we always seem to get good response from all of these things. We have, gonna toot my own horn here for a minute, but we have won two awards for the best live entertainment in southwest Nova for two consecutive years, which was nice to see. We charge no admission. That's also been a point of great controversy, because there are those who believe we should be charging admission, and I was quick to say, if you choose to go that way, find somebody else to run it, because it won't be me. I know for a fact the kind of red tape you get into when you start charging admission. It's a whole other level of red tape, which, at my age and stage in life, I am not prepared to take on, as well as organize all of the entertainment. I won't do it. So I've been able to keep it away, and I hope I can keep doing that. The idea, too, is that this is not about, you know, someone said to me, for instance, you should be charging $10 a person. If we charged $10 a person, we would lose probably 40% of our attendance, because we have a lot of single-parent people who come down, they couldn't afford $10 for two or three times over the month of August. However, if it's an open, free admission, and they've got an extra $5 in their pocket, and they want to put it in the donation jar, hey, that's great. And that's the way I think we should keep it, because it has, I've had people from other festivals call and say, how are you guys doing it? Because we're spending way more money than you are, and I can tell you how we're doing it. I've got a lot of friends who are musicians. I've got a lot of friends who are in business, and the community is behind it, and that's how we're doing it. It's not about money. Whatever we make as a surplus over and above our expenses goes back to the school. We keep an open account from year to year, but basically, we give a lot of money to the schools. I'm about to go on to that in just a minute. It's funded by donations and sponsors. For the past number of years, the donations have amounted to slightly over $7,000 per year to school breakfast and lunch programs of the area, and the schools I've listed here, I hope I haven't forgotten any, Carrollton, Port Maitland, Maple Grove, Meadowfields, Yarmouth Elementary, Yarmouth High, Wedgeport, Drummond, Perrinbah, and Belleville. The one that we have not yet reached, because we ran out of money, was the one in West Public Hall, but all the others have been visited on a regular basis over the past number of years. I think it's safe to say that it is the largest single-summer event in the area, and it brings into Yarmouth, and this is a conservative, very conservative estimate, well over 9,000 people during the month of August. When you figure we're opening from, or running from just after the lunch hour through until 10 at night, that crowd in the main tent turns over a number of times during that 10 hours. So it's no exaggeration when you think of it as a nine-day event, saying that it's 9,000 people. It's probably a whole lot more than that, but that's a conservative estimate. And of course, when people come to the area, they spend money. I had one businessman from Main Street tell me that the month of August for him is better than the month of December, and I took that as a real, you know, compliment in our direction. I said, I really appreciate that. I said, I hope you talk to the right people, telling them that. As far as budget is concerned, people are always asking me about budget and financial statements and all that kind of stuff. I talked to an accountant about a financial statement, and he said, look, it's going to cost a fair bit of money for you to do a financial statement, which sort of contradicts completely the purpose of this event as a bunch of, we're volunteers. I never take five cents out of this event, nor does anyone else. The musicians get a small stipend toward their time. Your relative will vote for that. You know, it's not a moneymaker for any of us. So, but we do a fine-tuned budget, and over a period of 15 years, which is what I've worked on this project now, we have to depend, excuse me, we have to depend on about $250 per hour in order to operate, to cover all of our advertising, to cover all of the incidental expenses. There's always somebody saying, you owe us X number of dollars for this or that. I'm writing checks constantly. So this is a figure that is about as accurate as I can come up with. $250 per hour over the number of hours we have, which is 90 hours altogether, and that results in over $20,000 of expense. Sounds like a lot, but yet, when I look at some of the projects that various levels of government have been responsible for, it's not really very much by comparison, considering what it does for the community. Major cost is the sound system and the Soundman, and yes, I won't apologize for the fact that I have pushed for Ocean Blue music, not that they mean anything to me, because they're not relatives, they're friends, but that's all. But they do a super job. They come in, they're very professional about how they handle everything, and I've had a lot of professional acts come in and say, where did you get this guy? We can't find anybody in Halifax or Moncton or Fredericton even close to what this guy does. He's that good. So yes, he charges, no question. I mean, it costs us right in the vicinity of $10,000 a year, but it's well worth it, considering he puts in nine full days and nights. So he's not getting rich either, and he's got top-quality equipment, and he keeps it in top shape at all times. I was just advised in the last couple of weeks that I am now responsible for liability insurance, which, yeah, which I have never been told before. Many years ago, when this came up, I asked the question, what about liability? Oh, I was told it was no worries, because that was under what was called an umbrella clause. And I said, great. I assumed that it was still in place, and I guess that's where I should have been more on the ball to follow up and make sure that that still applied. Apparently, it doesn't, so I've been doing some investigating on the cost there. I'm told it's going to cost anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 for liability insurance for nine days. This came out of the blue, you know, and that's the kind of stuff, well, you all know, you've dealt with this kind of stuff before, but it kind of took the wind out of our sails when we were hit with this, because I had no idea that this would be, you know, expected of us also. So it just, it makes for a wonderful event for the area. We do it as a group of volunteers. You know the amounts of money that go to the schools. If you want to check with the schools and see how they feel about it, when I call Carrollton and Port Maitland and places like that, they're waiting in the parking lot when we arrive. They're that excited about the fact that somebody has given them an extra little boost. So that's where it stands. As far as the type of music that we have, it's for all ages, all types of music. I don't get into too much heavy metal. I don't want to get people jumping out of the windows at the hospital. I did have one complaint my first year, 2007. I said, what are you doing over there? He said, don't blame me. But anyway, overall, it's, you know, you've got a good variety of every type of music, and we try to reserve Sundays, for the most part, for the seniors. I think it's important to recognize and appreciate the efforts of the seniors in the community, and if you went down there on a Sunday night, for instance, you would probably see a country band playing. During the afternoon, you would probably hear gospel music, and on the Sunday mornings, we try to have a church service, and we try to involve various churches of the area. I don't know what more I can tell you. We've had some pros. We've had John Gracie, Laura Smith, Terry Kelly, Hal Bruce, Ryan Cook, Vic Mullin. We gave him a lifetime achievement award two years ago. He had never, ever in the past been recognized by anyone in Yarmouth for his lifetime achievement. He's one of the best-known musicians lifetime in the entire country, and no one had ever recognized him here. So, you know, we try to do as much as we can in as many directions as we can, considering the fact that we're volunteers. Now, I've shot my mouth off enough. Whatever questions you have, I'll try to answer.
So before I go for questions, I'd like to thank you for the presentation.
You're very welcome.
We'll do questions, and what I can say is, I've heard nothing but great things about the Coal Shed Festival.
Thank you.
And I've attended a number of times, and the talent, I can also say firsthand experience is fantastic, and the organization's great, too. So thank you, Phil, for all the work you and all the volunteers have done. So I'll go to counsel. Ms. Durkey, counsel, oh, sorry. Oh, Phil, I think you've got to turn off your, oh, I've got Lauren. Sorry, my apologies. Nope. Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Trevor. Phil, great presentation, and I know about the, I participate in some of the music myself, and as you were saying, it's not the same type, same people every time, because I know when our group in Pembroke, we use the Rutter's tent, you know, there's people coming in, and after we're finished, people are going out, and different people are coming in. So it's a constant revolving of people attending sort of thing, and I say, I even participated a couple of times with our Knights of Columbus Choir, too, right? And so it's been, it's very, it's very good for the, very good for the community, and very good for the people who maybe don't have that $10 bill.
Well, that's exactly.
And that's a big thing. If they could drop a dollar in, a Rooney, a Tooney, or something in.
Yeah, and if they can't put anything in, hey, that's fine.
Yep. And I've also participated in the, oh, what was it called? The songwriting circle.
Yes.
One time, they're like, you know, and that was pretty interesting. Some pretty good musicians. I felt like I was way down on the list, but they treat you, everybody's treated equal, like, you know, which is good.
Well, that's what we want to do.
Yeah. So it's a very good event, and I hope it continues on, and I'm sure our council will have, will be helping out somewhere along the line there, so.
I would love to see as many members of council down there as possible, and as long as you want to stay.
Absolutely.
Open invitation.
Thank you, Counselor Cushing. Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Cunningham, and thanks, Phil. Nice to see you again.
Yes.
I have a few direct questions for you. In order for us to fund anything, we need a budget, and do you, are you, first of all, did you do a grant application, which includes a budget for us to look at?
I have not done it yet, because I wanted to do this presentation first.
Okay.
And it's due, I believe, is it April 15?
I think so, yes. And, okay, thank you. That'll be great. Look forward to seeing that. And the second question I have is, the $7,000 a year that goes for the school breakfast program, is this over and above what you, your budget for, so is this money that's collected as donations?
That's surplus. That's money over and above what we need to have. We need to have $250 an hour to run the show for the weekends that we have, and we're fortunate enough up to this point. I've no idea each year what I'm going to be faced with, but yes, that's what we've been lucky enough to be able to provide to the schools in the last few years. Now, maybe it'll be more, maybe it'll be less this year, I don't know.
Okay, thanks. So that's not coming from the sponsorships and donation?
No, no.
This is just from the donations that people are?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And so the artists do receive a stipend?
They do receive a stipend.
Okay. And the last question, have you ever considered, like, I know you don't want to charge particularly for local talent, have you ever considered a headliner, like, just one event?
Well, we have several. Like I say, we've had, just to give you a few ideas of headliners, we've had John Gracie, we've had Laura Smith, she's won all kinds of awards across the country, Terry Kelly is well-known across the country, Hal Bruce, Ryan Cook, Vic Mullin. We try to have at least one, hopefully, two each year.
Yeah, so, no, what I'm asking is, have you ever considered just having one headliner where you would charge admission to that one event?
No, I can get the headliners without charging.
Okay.
And if they're not prepared to come and help us out, then we'll find someone else who is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'll tell you, my reason, I don't mean to sound abrupt with you, but this is going back to when we had a music store. We brought in a couple of professional entertainment people to the Burridge at the time. The first one, and I'm not even going to get into telling who they were, because that wouldn't be fair to them, but the first one we brought in was excellent, really good, and we had a full house, and we made a few bucks, which we certainly needed in those days, and we were pretty, you know, we were enthused about it. So we had an opportunity to bring someone else a few months later, probably as good an entertainer as the first person. We had 14 people show up.
Wow.
And the entertainment tax guy sat beside us the entire evening, and at the end of the night, he came over and he said, well, you owe me X number of dollars. I said, let me get this straight. I've just lost my shirt, and I still have to pay you, and I suppose you're staying at the Grand, plus you're getting food paid for and all the rest of it. That really turned me off. It really did, you know, and that's just the tip of the iceberg when you get into paying. When you start paying professional entertainment, you're involved with so many levels of bureaucracy, it simply isn't worth it unless you have a staff who can handle that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't have the time, nor do I have the energy at my point in life to do it. I love doing this part of it, but I don't believe that that's even necessary. I think we've proven it's not necessary.
Just, just asking, and I do, and I do understand.
Yeah.
I know once you start paying for bands and things to come in, I know the taxes are heavy, and I know the paperwork, I know it's a lot of work, and how, from the Digby Show, that's, they ran into a lot of problems.
They sure did.
They got hit with a huge tax bill, because they weren't paying taxes on anything.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, I totally understand where you're coming from with Larry from Ocean Blue. He is absolutely fantastic.
He really is, yeah.
I've worked with him through the Car Show, and we're very lucky to have him.
Yep, no question. But that's, that's the whole reason for it. It's a whole different level, not to say that it's any better, but the bureaucracy of it, to me, would just absolutely take away from it.
No, and I, and I agree with you, and I think that's something, though, that people need to understand, though, that when you start organizing those bigger events and charging money for them, there's that tax implication.
Yes, yes, sure.
Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Durkey. Counselor Horvath.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming and sharing. You said you hoped we would all be down there, and I hope you didn't mean on stage, because I can't sing. Just to participate and hang out.
I have you scheduled for Saturday night at 8:00 here. It says 22 original songs. You mean, I've been given wrong information?
I'm glad we've been given lots of heads up on that one. No, thank you. I appreciate the fluidity of being able to kind of, you know, like, with no admission fee, I do think that there's value in having a free, we know it's not free, you know, event for the public to participate and just kind of be able to come and go and, you know, do those things. I do appreciate that. I have a question. How many volunteers do you have beside you?
Not very many.
And so what's going to happen?
Number six.
Okay, so you do have, like, a core group of people who do help you, okay. And when you said headliners, do you pay those headliners, or do they come for free, because they just want to be here and hang out?
They, they get the same as one of the others.
Really? Yeah, so that really does.
I might, for instance, in a couple of cases, I've had to get hotel rooms.
Yeah.
But the hotel rooms are given to us at a reduced rate, so, you know.
Okay.
We get our bases covered that way, but, no, I'm not going to start paying lots of money, because that, again, would start to defeat the purpose, I think. If people, like, for instance, Laura Smith, who was, unfortunately, the lady's passed away, but I mean, she had some of the best-known songs in the country, and she was so excited about this festival, she said, oh, no, I wouldn't consider charging for it. She said, if you can get me a place to stay, I'll be there.
Yeah, and that really, you know, speaks volumes to the event and the people who organize it, that people of that caliber are willing to come for, you know, a nominal.
I'm working on a couple now, but I'm not going to tell you who's.
No, well, I thought we were the headliners.
Well, but you've tried to back out.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Aren't you going to use a stage name this year?
Yeah. Anyway, I do appreciate it, and I know that, you know, Counselor Durkey had already asked about the grant application, and I see in the past, I just did a quick look, we have donated in the past, so hopefully, we can continue.
I'm going to tell you what I'm going to ask for, I can tell you that right now. I'm going to ask for one day, which is $2,500. That's what I'm asking for. If I get it, or if I don't get it, that's, I'm telling you right now.
Never hurts, never hurts to ask, right?
That's right.
You don't know if you don't try.
That's right.
Anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Trevor. Phil, one thing about it, you don't beat around the bush.
No, I'm afraid that I don't, I'm not very successful at beating around the bush.
I think it's because where you live, over there in Pembroke.
You boast in the saltwater, working in fish plants.
That's right, yeah. Just bring up, we talked, discussed about bringing, paying headliners out and bringing in groups, and I think all we have to do, we reflect back to the Mariners Center, when you brought, I think it was Loretta Lind in for the concert, and my goodness, I just sat on the board as a, or sat on the board meetings as a private citizen, and I couldn't believe the amount of money, amount of money they had to raise just to, just to bring her there, right? And I don't know if they made any money or they lost money at the end of the day, but it's incredible what you have to go through with something like this, the local people. People like local music.
Yeah, and we've tried to provide a mix, so that, I remember when we first started doing this, and I think I mentioned this one day in an interview not too long ago, I remember there was a little girl on stage, and she really wasn't very good. She was on in the afternoon, but I thought, her heart was in it, you know? Give her the chance, she may get better. And this lady came over to me, and she said, don't you scream, these people? I had to hold back. I didn't say what I was thinking.
Good.
I said, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have time for that. That's all I said.
Yeah.
However, I thought several other things, which we won't go into now.
Well, thank you, Phil, and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming in. So you just sparked, sparked a thought in me. So you're going to be looking for a day from us. Do you look for, do you look for a day from, like, the other two councils as well, like, generally? Who else do you, or do you look for, like, your fundraising, I'm going to keep elaborating, so.
No, that's fine.
Your fundraising, like, is that generally, like, sponsorship? Do you look for sponsors to maybe sponsor a day?
Yeah, I've got a couple of posters on the way around.
Yeah, yeah.
And at the bottom, there's a list of, you know, sponsors from the past.
Yeah.
Some of them we keep for years, some of them you have one year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I was just wondering, like, as far as council and stuff is concerned, like, do you approach Argyle for a day as well in the town?
I will be approaching Argyle. I have a meeting already set up for the end of the month. As for the town, I have had numerous conversations with them, and in the past, they have covered the, their, what used to be their responsibility of the sound system and Soundman. I'm not sure what I'm going to get this year. I might as well be blunt, I don't know.
Right. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, and seeing no additional comment, I'll say this, I don't think you've got enough time to beat around the bush, Phil. You're too busy with organizing this, so.
And I'm also learning to be a cook, by the way, now.
Pardon me?
Since my wife's stroke, I'm learning to be a cook.
Well, I can't.
And I mean, from scratch.
Well, I wish I could help you with that, but unfortunately, no.
I wish somebody could help me with it. Or the front door.
So, Phil, thank you for everything. Thank you for a wonderful presentation, and the questions were excellent from council, and we're looking forward to your application.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you also. I need to get those posters back, though.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
They're the only ones I've got for certain years. Still didn't seem to use them. That's why I apologize. Your stage name is. Thank you very much.
Can you just push the red button on the record, please, Phil? Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great day, everybody.
You, too. Thanks so much. So Item Seven, new business. And the first item's the NSFM regional annual, sorry, regional meeting, April 14, 2022, and I'll look to our CEO for update.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So that's more or less just a reminder, I think we had originally endeavored to have a presentation for council from the executive director of the NSFM, but we've had to reschedule that. So it's just a reminder, I think you all have emails about registering for that meeting, and it will be online. about registering for that meeting, and it will be online.
Thank you. The next item is a request for decision around municipal tax sale. Um, folks have reviewed, uh, the, um, the item. What's the wishes of council? Counselor Allen. Oh, sorry, my apologies. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. You can go ahead.
Yeah.
Usually, um, Trevor's the one, but now that he's sitting in the chair seat, I'm like, oh, we, we should probably get on the ball on some of these. So, I would like to recommend to council the C O's recommendation that we approve the Director of Finance and Tax Clerk's expected opening bid maximum tax sale bids on AAN 1205048 for $3,813.61 and AAN 8480559 for $8,126.88.
Thank you, counselor. Uh, we have a mover. Do we have a seconder? We have a seconder in Counselor Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. So, item seven point three is appointment for absence of warden and deputy warden, and what I can tell everybody is that, uh, our, our warden's away for a bit. Um, we know that, and I will also be away just for a short, uh, bit, starting on Saturday, and, um, uh, and, um, coming back on, uh, Thursday morning early. Uh, so, having said that, um, there's probably not gonna be, uh, any necessity to do much, but we should have a, a counselor appointed that's on the ground in, in, in Yarmouth County, and in case something comes up where there has to be a physical presence. I mean, I'm, I'm available via phone and, and so forth, but, uh, that's a good thing. So, thoughts from council? Is there somebody who'd like to, to sort of have their name put forward, or would somebody like to suggest somebody? Counselor Durkey?
I'll offer.
Absolutely, okay. Sounds, sounds good. So, uh, can, can we have a motion to, uh, to, uh, appoint, uh, in the absence of the warden, deputy warden for, for next week? Patty Durkey, um, to, to that role? Have a mover? Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I'm, I'll make that motion. Do we, do we need a motion to move it to regular council for approval, or?
We do, but we're gonna zip right into regular council at the end of the day.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to move, to move, um, that to, to regular council, that Patty Dirk, Counselor Durkey, um, step in as being the face of the municipality of Yarmouth for, for a term no longer than three or four days.
Okay, okay. So, now, for, for next week, okay. Thank you. We've got a seconder. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, counsel.
Oh, wait till you see what I'm gonna do.
I'll be late.
So, the next item on the agenda is seven point four, Wellness Program Policy W dash zero zero four dash twenty-two. What's the wishes of council? Oh, my apologies. Oh, you're just here to answer questions? Okay, okay, yeah. My apologies, yeah. Wishes of council. Oh, that is hard to see. You are hard to see down there. Um, Counselor Horber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before, this is brand new, so could we have the, um, Darlene and maybe our C O go through this for us? I mean, I have read through it, but just, you know, to kind of give us a gist before we actually, I, I mean, I guess I'm willing to make the motion to move it to regular council, but I'd like to just hear a little bit about it before I do that. Is that possible?
Certainly, yeah.
Do you wanna start? I'll start then. Yeah, can you, yeah. And then Trevor will turn it on.
Okay. Um, so, this came from a conversation that council had about, uh, about some, doing something for wellness, um, regarding employees and, uh, council. Um, so we had a small committee get together and, and work on this. We looked at, um, the original discussion was around membership to Mariners on Main, and then council wanted to expand on that. So, excuse me, that's what we did here. If you look at, um, the first part in two point two, for example, we say that, um, we, we suggested a maximum two hundred and fifty, and that's based on what the cost was, uh, what, what the employee would get reimbursed from joining Mariners on Main for a full family membership. So, that's why we, that's how we came up with that number. Um, it's, but they're available to employees and counselors only. And then if you look down at the, at part four, the wellness, the eligibility, so all members of council, all person, permanent full-time employees and permanent part-time employees, but casual and seasonal employees are not, uh, not part of it. And then if you look at appendix A, we tried to come up with some examples of things to give an idea of what, you know, what kind of, um, things people could be doing. So, the, the, these are just examples that we came up with. Um, and we put a note there that, because, because so much of what people do is online now, too, um, a lot of people might want to do some kind of class or course online, or purchase a, a device, like a Fitbit. So, that's why we expanded it a bit, or we're recommending expanding it a bit. Um, but we did put a note that we encourage employees and counselors to shop locally where possible. I think that's, do you want anything?
So, I think I'll just share, you know, in terms of, you know, what's the financial exposure if we, if we move forward. So, we have, I think right now we have about twenty-six employees that qualify, and then the seven counselors. So, if everybody took advantage, we would be, we would be in the eight thousand dollar range per year to fund this program.
If everybody took advantage to the full amount. It doesn't necessarily mean everyone will, will submit something for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Darlene. That's excellent. Thank you, Madam C O. Um, questions, our questions. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think this is, this is a great policy to get into. I do have a couple, a little nitpick things, I guess. I'm gonna be nitpicky. Um, so the two hundred and fifty dollars per fiscal year, if someone applies for it, but it says for counselors only and not family members. But you just mentioned that if someone gets a family membership-
Yes.
Does, is that not kind of contradict?
Um, so, I can take that one, Darlene.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So, the family membership at Mariners on Main is nine hundred dollars, but a individual membership is about five. So, uh, an employee or a counselor could purchase a family membership, but they would max out at two hundred and fifty dollars on that, which is fifty percent of an individual membership.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna, I just don't, you know, don't want there to be-
Sure.
No, that's great, nope. Um, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I'll make a motion to, uh, to move this policy to council for approval.
Okay, so we've got a mover, and I see there's another question. We'll, we'll put the question on the floor and then go. We've got a seconder in, uh, Counselor Horber. Additional, additional conversation. Counselor Kush, uh? Oh, there we go. I didn't press it. That's my fault. Counselor question.
Thank you, Trevor. Um, very interesting program. Um, maybe we should discuss it, or do I, can I assume that by, by having this type of program in, has it been proven to, uh, other organizations that the wellness program is beneficial to the employees?
I don't have any research on that. Um, I, not anything that's, that's written in, you know, there's just our assumption that anything like this would be beneficial. Any, any, anything that would be on that list would be beneficial to an employee or counselor.
Yeah, for the mental health and, and, uh, physical activity.
And healthy employees or happier employees.
Is that why you're smiling?
Yeah.
(laughing) Good. Okay, thank you then.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Horber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you to staff for putting this, uh, policy together. I think it's, I think it's great, and, you know, wellness is, well, wellness and health are more than just health. It's, you know, all of those other things that are combined, you know, mental health and, you know, the, the happiness at work is, you know, part of wellness, you know, as well. So, I, I am fully in support of this, and, um, C O Brooks answered my question about how much it would cost us per year, and I'm assuming this would be from the 2022, 2023 start, so it would be in April one. Is that, that's just assumed?
That's, that would be in this budget year, is my understanding of-
Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, if I could, if the mover and the seconder are agreeable, you, you could amend your motion to say that the effective date of the policy is April first, 2022, and then there's no ambiguity.
Just a, a friendly amendment. We won't get into the secondary motion.
Can that, yeah, can that, can that amendment drop in? Can we, like, do that in the motion to the main at council?
Right, yep, sure, that'll work.
We can do that as well. Yeah, just remember whoever's making the motion to add, to add that to the, uh, the April first beginning.
Okay, and I-
For that next fiscal.
And I have one follow-up. So, if this is April one, are we thinking we'll approve this at our regular council meeting at the end of the month, not the one we're having after today, and that will give staff enough time to get everything in place?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Item seven point five, fees policy, F dash zero four four dash zero two. What's the wishes of council?
Yep, so I'll dig in and lean on Darlene. We're, we're, I'll obviously need her. So, um, a couple of months ago, council, uh, passed second reading of the bylaw to amend the sewer, uh, to amend the sewer bylaw. So, what that did was triggered some amendments required to the fees policy, and in your package, um, those changes are highlighted in yellow. I'll point your direction, uh, to page four, um, which is where those changes are, including the sewer connection fee, which is, uh, included in the bylaw, and just to rename the capital recovery fee to one-time capital.
Okay, um, wishes of council? Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, yes, that, perfectly fine. Um, I just have one question. Um, from the development, uh, permits that we require, and I know we've had, uh, the last time we went through this, we had some changes, um, with that. Um, for example, I think it's two thousand dollars a wic, a deposit gets, um, given back to people going through demolition, et cetera. Do we ever have any complaints about that, or is that, that's obidokie?
We, we don't, and we're actually leaders in the province around that. Um, so we have some of the highest demolition permit fees in the province, and, um, early on, um, probably two, three years ago, we talked about that, Counselor Durkey. And, um, what that does is it actually encourages people who are demolishing buildings to dispose of the material in the, in a way that does not negatively impact the municipality with respect to illegal dumping or, um, negative impacts on our diversion credits that Waste Check receives. And I think ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we return the money. So, and one thing we do, do to help, because, um, commercial contractors are required to pay the two thousand dollar deposit, so we will actually hold a check-in trust so that they don't have to, if they've got four or five projects on the go, we don't have eight or ten thousand dollars of their money tied up. We'll hold a check-in trust. So, we will make arrangements to work with, work with private sector.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Glad to hear that. Um, and on that note, I will, uh, make a motion that we recommend, uh, the fees policy, uh, for, um, uh, agreement at the next council, regular council meeting.
Mover, seconder, Counselor pushing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Item seven point six, grants policy, G dash zero six eight dash zero nine, placemaking. And what's the wishes of council?
Go ahead. I'll start.
Yep.
So, um, a, a small group of, of staff worked together to take all that we had learned, um, over the past year in working at placemaking and looking at your strategic initiatives, and, uh, we're proposing that we include provision for placemaking projects inside your grants program. And I'll draw your attention to page three, section four point seven, which provides the framework, um, to launch a program of that nature. Um, and we are recommending that, um, in particular, that the eligibility be up to fifty percent of project costs to a maximum of two hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars per, per application. Now, there is provision, um, in the policy that if council chooses to categorize a project as a marquee project, then, then council has, um, the full authority of its discretionary spending powers to do what it wants to do with a project like that. Um, so, you may have an opportunity to participate in something that is, um, impactful for our community that you may want to contribute more than twenty-five hundred dollars for, and you could categorize that as a marquee project, which would give you the powers under the policy to contribute more than twenty-five hundred dollars. And then, um, there, there is a couple of, um, pieces of language that, um, upon another review of this draft amendment, uh, Darlene and I picked up on. Um, we're just gonna recommend that if, if this gets forwarded to council for approval, uh, we should include a section because it's a spending policy. We should include, include a section around your authority for the spending and then the statutory requirement to disclose. So, we'll include a little bit of language around that. Your authority comes from section sixty-five of the MGA, and sixty-five C does require us to disclose a list of the grant recipients, and so we'll be recommending language that, that be published on the municipality's website. So, that's not in the draft you have, but if you decide to move it forward, we, we would be bringing, um, that language in the revised document that would be in your package later this month.
Thank you, C O Brooks. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one question. Um, one of the, it says the eligibility is only for nonprofit charitable groups and organizations, and I, I have a concern that a group of people could come together and not, not be registered as nonprofit organizations, and I'll throw this out there just as an example. If I had a group of people who wanted to, uh, go paint the Sanford Drawbridge, for example, they would not be a, a nonprofit organization. They would just be a group of volunteers. And so, my concern would be that our grants policy might restrict, uh, a group like that that do not have this non-charitable status from going out and, and doing some of these activities. So, your thoughts?
Under the MGA, you cannot give money to an individual.
Okay, so it would-
So, they would require a partner organization, uh, perhaps YASTA, or, um, something like that. They would, they would require a partner to come to the table and help facilitate their eligibility.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Horber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start the formal process. I make them, I make a motion that we, um, recommend the amendments to grant policy D, G dash zero six eight dash zero nine to regular council with amendments that we will review at the end of the month. And then I have a question.
Absolutely, okay. So, we have a seconder in Counselor Allen, and the chair recognizes, oh, sorry, you've got a follow-up question, Counselor?
I do, yep. Um, we have, at this point, we have no idea how much this would actually cost us, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
And do we have a cap? Like, or was there, and I know that that's, I already recommended it to regular council, but if it's already going through some revisions before that, is there?
Yeah, so, the way your entirety of your grant program works is when, um, the material comes to council for deliberation, um, staff provides council the, the total maximum ask that you've been asked for, and it's part of your budget deliberations. And why you do it that way is that you're considering these asks in context of all the other financial pressures on the municipality. Um, we have, you know, we have seen in the past where we've had, um, maximum amounts on grant programs, for example, your Safe Restart Program. It would be the only type of grant where you would have an annual maximum globally. Your other grant programs, for example, your tourism program, you don't have an annual maximum. So, it would be the only one, and it's well within your power to do that, and we, if you would like that, we could amend the policy so that when it comes forward at the end of the month, it's as you would like it amended for sure. So, it's absolutely council's wishes.
So, just a follow-up. Thank you for that. Um, just so I'm clear. So, this money is coming from our larger lump sum of, or our larger grant money that we have available. With no additional money added, it would just be these. So, the placemaking applications would come under placemaking, or would they come under our regular grant?
Yep, they would come with all of your other grant applications.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And this would be obviously for the start of the 2022, 23. So, anyone for this year probably isn't, you know, unless someone's quick out the gate, probably isn't gonna happen. Very, probably very many wouldn't happen?
If it gets approved at the end of March, then there's still time for applications to come in by April fifteenth. Um, there are provisions in the policy for council to deliberate applications after you set your rate.
Right.
So, you know, it could be that you'll want a little bit extra in your contingency this year because placemaking is a little bit late getting legs under it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
That all makes sense. Thank you. Counselor question?
Thank you, Trevor. Um, going to back what, uh, Counselor Durkey had mentioned about, uh, a group of citizens who maybe wanna paint the Sanford Drawbridge, and all of a sudden, it comes to my mind, would a, would a port authority be classified as something like that, that individuals could partner with?
Mm-hmm.
So, so there's a possible way of getting it done. So, good, thank you.
Great, thank you. I think, uh, this is a, a, a really flexible way to, uh, deliver some aid to, you know, community groups that, that want to enhance, uh, placemaking. So, um, there is a motion on the floor, but I will go to Counselor Allen before I call the lead question. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just kind of reading into this, and, and just to follow up with what Madam C O said about, um, how much money we can put in, we can put a little extra into our contingency, but I see, maybe I'm reading this wrong. There's an amount of seventy-five hundred of grants budgeted will be set aside as contingency. But that's not the contingency amount.
Yep. So, if council would like to increase the contingency- Yep, so if council would like to increase the contingency this year in order to accommodate the timing of the rollout of placemaking, you could make a motion that would say for the fiscal year 21, 20, 2022, 23, you would increase the contingency by $5,000. So you could do that just by motion, rather than change your policy.
Okay, okay, no, that's great, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There being no additional questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. So the next item is street lighting policy, S dash 088, 98. And there were just a couple of housekeeping pieces here, and perhaps we can go to our CEO, Ms. Brooks, to, for, for quick overview.
Sure, yep. So I worked with the Director of Corporate Services and Director of Public Works, and we took a look at the policy per council's direction to see if there were any other administrative or implementation pieces that required amending in addition to removing the requirement that the counselor for the district provide support. And so we really didn't find anything. There's, there's one slight improvement in the definition section, just to define what majority means, but otherwise than that, the changes flow through the document to remove the requirement for the counselor for the district to indicate support. And the other piece that we've removed is there was a requirement that applications be delivered by hand or in the mail, but we're in an electronic age, and we accept, we accept email submissions, so, yeah.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Counselor Durkey.
I'm taking over the deputy warden's job here for the moment, so I'll make that motion that we refer the street lighting policy, S dash 088, 98, to regular council meeting for approval.
Okay, thank you, do we have a secondor? Counselor Allen seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you, thank you, Darlene. Public municipal support, item 7.8, Re-Ukraine. And you're all aware of the terrible things that have, have gone on in Eastern Europe and with the invasion of, of the Ukraine by Russia, and everybody's watching on the news, and there are, are, is, has resulted in a humanitarian crisis. And there are, I guess what I'm looking to is, is for some direction from council, or the council and staff is looking from some direction from council, how, how we may assist. And so attached to your agenda item is a letter from the municipality of District of Guy'sborough. They have 4,586 residents, and they donated $25,000 to the Canadian Red Cross Ukraine Crisis Appeal. And the Canadian government is pledging to max donate, the donation for a total contribution of $50,000. So in the event, it's there for everybody to read, and I will look to our CEO for some additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So generally speaking, what we're seeing around the municipal community is definitely the Ukraine flag, lots of people lighting things up in blue and yellow, and we are ready for that, should you wish to do that. We've made preparations for that. On the donations to the Canadian Red Cross, so the Government of Canada is matching donations to the Canadian Red Cross for the Ukraine, to a maximum contribution on the part of the Government of Canada to 10 million, and that's maxed out. So $48 million has been donated to the Canadian Red Cross for the Ukraine conflict. And so that, that, you know, that, the matching dollar opportunity is, is no longer there, the Government of Canada has reached their limit. Interestingly enough, on the CBC this morning, Portia Clark had a conversation with Kate Bain, who is the Executive Director of Charity Intelligence Canada, and they support people on making evidence-based decisions as they contribute and support charities around the world. And they talked a lot about the importance of donating cash in situations like this for lots of reasons, around supply chain, we don't really know what people need, and new opportunities are available to support in a case like this by moving cash directly, electronically. So there, I asked the question of Ms. Bain, I emailed her this morning, and I asked if a donation, because the federal government matching dollars are maxed out, if a donation was made on the part of this council to the Canadian Red Cross, would they transfer it directly to the Ukrainian Red Cross? And my question was that, because what I heard in the interview this morning was, around the world, Red Cross in each jurisdiction become experts based on the experiences in those jurisdictions. And the Ukrainian Red Cross unfortunately are experts in managing conflict. So they are working with people living in the Ukraine who can't get out. There are, I think, just over 2 million people have left the Ukraine. But all of the rest of the Ukrainian citizens are there, and they need support, and the Ukrainian Red Cross is inside, inside the conflict area. So Kate didn't know that if we made the donation to the Red Cross in Canada, she didn't know if it would flow directly to the Ukrainian Red Cross or not. So I offer that up for you to consider. I'm not sure what your wishes are, what your pleasures are. I'm just trying to give you some information about what the lay of the land looks like. Doctors Without Borders are active in the Ukraine, that's an option for you to consider. We have doctors inside the conflict area who are, who are delivering services to injured people inside the conflict. Other aid agencies are outside the borders of the Ukraine. They're on the borders, and they're helping, but they're helping with, with the refugees. So there, there is financial need to support the people who are remaining in the Ukraine, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Counselor Durkey.
I apologize in advance, I, if I become emotional about this, but this is heartbreaking to me. My grandparents and great-grandparents on both sides of my family were from Ukraine. And they immigrated here in the early 1900s, prior to World War I. And part of the reason why they did that is because of the conflict, of course, that, that happened then. And, and, and I'm heartbreaking, broken to see that this is happening now in 2022, when for so many years, we have said after World War II, never again, and, and we never wanted to see this again, and, and here it's happening again. And, and we have 2 million people trying to leave their homeland, which is just totally unfair, because one person chooses to, to want more and never happy with what they have. So I am just wondering if, two things. One is I will definitely make the motion that we raise the Ukrainian flag and, and show support, and certainly if we can do colors on our, lights of color on our building, I would be very happy to see that. And it's great that we're showing support, and I just wish we could really make a difference, which we can't. I mean, if I had the opportunity to go and do something, I, I would. I, I just can't believe that this is happening now. So in terms of the 25,000 donation, I would absolutely be in favor, and I'm wondering if, if we can make that directly to the, the Ukrainian Red Cross as opposed to going through the Canadian Red Cross? Is that a possibility?
I don't have the answer, but if that's the preference, and it can happen, then that, then that would happen. It'd be good to have some direction on what to do if I can't do it directly.
Okay. So I, I'll make that motion, first of all, to raise the flag and, and do the lights, and, and to contribute, to donate 25,000 to the Ukrainian Red Cross. If that doesn't work, then we could look at another organization that's directly impacting those who are, who have to stay where they are.
Okay, and, and Counselor, if, if you would just add to that, the, the place it's coming from, I'd recommend that, that financially, that those dollars would come from our operating reserve.
To me, so I'm recommending, recommending all of this, of course, to regular council, and I would really like to see us add that to today's regular council meeting, if, if, if possible. Thank you, and I'll add the part that it would come from our operating expenses.
Okay, we have a, we have a mover for the motion, do we have a secondor? Yes, seconded, Counselor Horbert, we have a question.
Thank you, Trevor.
Counselor question.
I, I agree with what Counselor Durkey was saying about, about helping out the Ukrainian situation there. And as our CEO mentioned, that the Red Cross is, is, there's no guarantee that it's going to go to the Ukrainian Red Cross, and I certainly like to see that money go to the Ukrainian Red Cross or some other organization, or some way, some other way that we know that that money's going to help those people within that, that conflict zone, that combat zone. Like, they need help, what can we do to help them? If we can't go this direction, can we go another one? And Counselor Durkey alluded to that, so I just wanted to make sure I supported that, that, that train of thought, too. I just don't want to give money out there, and where does it go? We don't know. So I'd like to see it be directed to some type of, some type of organization that we can say, yes, the municipality of Yarmouth contributed this much money to this in the combat zone. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, I, I'm going to need clarification on the, on the motion, just, just so that we, I want to make sure it's clear so people know what we're asking, what we're planning on here. I've always been a person that has been skeptical on how governments be involved. I can't lie, it's, I'm, my heart breaks for us going on over there. There's been conflicts all over the world, different colleagues. This is front and center, my part could escalate into probably the worst one we've ever seen. I don't, I don't, I have followed.
Trevor.
As a municipality. I, I hate to say that.
Excuse me, Counselor Allen, you just need to turn your. Oh, my apologies.
Oh, I am.
There we go, sorry, my apologies.
Sorry. Yeah, I've just, I've always been critical of how government spends money on this stuff. And I, I agree with what Patty, with Counselor Durkey and Counselor Cushing are saying. If we are going to donate money, I want to make sure it's getting into the hands of people that need it. I always, I've said my whole life, take care of your own. I know we have problems in our own communities with, with people without shelters, without homes, but that we don't have bombs falling on them, don't get me wrong, but, you know, so I just want to make sure that if, if we're going to do this, and all indications is that we are, that it's going to go to the right place. So that's why I want to make sure that the motion is clear. I don't want it to go somewhere where it's going to go through four or five hands, or whatever money we donate, if we're going to donate $25,000, I don't want to see 10 of it getting to where it needs to get, and 15 getting split up somewhere going down the road. That's really what I'm looking for, I just want, you know.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to speak?
I can speak to that, yep. So I, I never knew anything about charity intelligence until this morning, and that's what they do. They verify that agencies are not consuming donations through admin costs. And so, you know, what was recommended this morning was Ukrainian Red Cross, and if not, Doctors Without Borders. They're right there, they're right in the country. So it's, I'm just not sure about us making an international. I'll find a way, I'll, I'll find a way to do it, but, you know, so the Red Cross is well-respected for that very thing, that donations are, are going out to the people who have need, they have very little overhead in, in their budget, so I hear what council's saying for sure.
So I, I guess as Chair, Counselor Durkey, if, if, and we had a mover, just, no, there's just the one motion, it's to do the, to do the, the lighting and those types of things, and also to contribute the $25,000. But I, I think, given what our CAOs, if, if we could just have clarity around the certainty around those two pieces, I, I think probably staff will need that. So the Ukrainian Red Cross, number one, and then the second option, option would be Doctors Without Borders. And those, those are both wonderful organizations, as far as I'm, I'm aware, very reputable organizations. So the, the mover's okay with that, friendly amendment, and the secondor, my apologies. Okay, and Chair, you are as well? Okay, so we'll go to Counselor Horbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone for the, the comments. It leaves me almost speechless. I do have to say that I, too, listened to the CBC this morning, and it was, it's eye-opening. You always hear of, you know, those overhead administrative costs, but it was good, it kind of made me feel good to know that there are people out there who are checking these things out, and that we, as a council, can be confident, you know, as much as we can be confident, that we're making, you know, you know, this contribution to, you know, an organization that will do what we're, you know, we're intending it to do. So it is heartbreaking, you know, it's almost, for me, it's unimaginable that, you know, we get up this morning, and I complained that I was shoveling off my steps, and really, I had a step, steps to shovel off, and I have a house and a roof over my head, so I'm, you know, 100% in support of this, and I, you know, I, I trust that our staff and CEO will make sure the money gets where it needs to go. Thank you.
Right, and, and I know the feeling that I get when I, when I watch it is, is very visceral, and, and I can't imagine having, you know, some heritage from, from the Ukraine like you do, Counselor Durkey, and it's a, it's just a terrible thing, and the scale is, is horrifying, and, and what's going on is horrifying, so. But again, I, I agree with Counselor Allen, we, we need to do diligence around which organizations, and I'm, I think those are two organizations that are kind of bulletproof in terms of their, in terms of their credibility. So Counselor Durkey?
Yes, just my final comment, as I agree completely, I think this needs to be directed towards the people who are suffering, and not, definitely not administrative costs. I would be very unhappy with that. So on that note, I'll call for the question.
Okay, question called, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Grant application for Yarmouth Earth Day events, item 7.9, and that's around the cleanup, and I'll look to our CEO for, for the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is one of those grant applications that is coming in that has a timeliness component to it, so, you know, the, the request is being made and would be assumed to be coming out of your contingency that's left available for this fiscal year. I will point to your, your attention to kind of the, the broad canvas that this event is intending to make across, across the county in terms of how, how far it would like to reach, and, and do some cleaning up and help improve our community. So five community cleanups, two beach picks, education in the schools, and a Saturday evening celebration at the Mariner Center, where everything that's being picked up is going to come and be put in the parking lot, and we'll have a visual representation of, of the material that's going to be picked up and disposed of correctly. So the budget is 8,000, the ask of Modi is 2,500, and you have $4,000 left in your contingency.
Counselor question.
Thank you, Trevor. I'll make a motion that we, we approve this, this request of the $2,500 and taking it out of our contingency. It's a very worthwhile program that's going to be, going to be done, and it's certainly going to draw awareness if we're able to stockpile that and take pictures of it, and, and promote how important it is to, to litter cleanup. The road I live on is just up from the wharf, and times everybody gets through drinking their Tim Hortons and their McDonald's or the Subways and whatnot, it goes on the ditches along, along, along our road, and we're constantly picking stuff up through there, right? So this would be a good awareness to, to the communities, how important it is to, to, not to litter, there we go, that's what I wanted to say, so.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll certainly support this.
We've got a mover, a secondor in Counselor Durkey, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, my apologies. I thought you were just motioning to motion. Patty, Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I agree with Counselor Cushing. I think the awareness component of this is huge. Let's hope our piles aren't huge, but if they are, then it certainly will make people aware, especially those people who do seem to think that littering is just okay, and it's not. And it's really sad to see that so many people are continuing to do that and harm our environment. So I totally support this ask.
Okay, and you were making, you were seconding the motion?
I was.
You do, okay. So, oh, that's a tough one. I'll agree with Warden, Warden John Cunningham. You're hard to see down there, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, maybe to the CAO. Because we, as a municipality, have, you know, we are in partnership with Waste Check. You know, we have a board there. Are there any of these funds that we could do in kind? I, I look at the cost of the event and bags and gloves and, you know, tipping fees zero. But is there any, anything that you could provide direction on that we may be able to get as an in-kind donation?
I'm, I'm, I don't know, the volunteers who are organizing the event, I don't know if they've chatted with Waste Check. But Waste Check will frequently provide gloves and, and garbage bags for events like this. So I don't know if, because of the size of this event, if Waste Check's not able to. But, you know, absolutely when we let the organizers know, you know, absolutely we would encourage them to make sure they double check with Waste Check.
Okay, perfect.
To mitigate some of those costs.
Okay, and just hoping that also along with this, that we on our social media account can help promote the event after it gets finalized. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Horber. I see no additional lights on, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Item eight, old business briefing note for Johns Cove Beach. And I'll look to our CAOs. It's a briefing note.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for several years now, council as a whole, staff and individual counselors have been working with community partners, recognizing some of the challenges we face because we have a great beach in our community that's not part of an official network of parks. So Johns Cove Beach out on Highway 304 on Cape Frisbee is, is a fairly busy beach used quite extensively by the public on the good weather days in the summer. And so unfortunately, there's some consequences that come with that. There's a significant amount of littering. We have quite a bit of public urination and defecation out there. And parking is an issue. The roads are narrow. Highway 304 and Gloucester Pound Road are both narrow. And on, on most sunny days, there's quite a bit of traffic congestion because there's parking on both sides of both roads. And so that does raise a safety concern in terms of just general traffic safety. But in particular, you know, if emergency vehicles need to be moving around and navigating. So, a few years ago, the municipality reached out to a property owner in the general area who, who had a plot of land that seemed to be big enough that we could construct a parking lot that would meet the province's parking lot standards, which would create some off-road parking. But also it would create an area where some waste receptacles could be placed and some movable washroom facilities could be placed. So there's a product out there in the marketplace where they're, they're Johnny on the spots, but they're on trailers. So you just, you tow them in in the spring and you hire somebody to service them and then you tow them out in the fall, kind of thing. Unfortunately, the property owner wasn't in a position to either provide a long-term lease or sell a portion of the land. And as you'll note in the diagram I attached, there's just not a lot of real estate to work with on some of these problems. And so get, you know, getting back to this issue and recognizing that this summer we're likely to see a lot, a lot more activity in that community. Counselor Cushing requested a briefing note to bring us all back up to speed on the file and see where counsel would like to go next.
Counselor question?
Thank you, Trevor, and thank you for that briefing note, our CAO, Gloria Brooks. I would like to, because of the problem that is there, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the problems with this, with the new government, outlining the ongoing safety concerns and other problems. And also to copy this to our MLA, Zach Church, so we keep him up to speed also. I know the liberals are not in power right now, but I'm sure Zach will be, would be a strong advocate for us to, to have some improvements down there. So I'd like to make that motion if I could.
Okay, so we've got a mover. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Yep, Counselor Allen seconds. Additional conversation? Counselor Horber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO, and thank you very much for this. When it talks about strategic plan linkages, we say that our, some of our policies would not support investments in permanent infrastructure in this area if it were owned by the municipality. So, in a perfect world, ideal world, we had a piece, there was a piece of land and the homeowner said, sure. What would be our implications if we brought in those Johnny on the spots and something were to happen or...
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we would check with our insurer just to make sure that we're okay inside our policy to be providing that service in that application. And if not, what are the implications? There would, there would be some HR considerations. We're not, we don't have that in a work plan right now. So we'd have to take a look at it to see if we can absorb it or, you know, is there a domino effect? And then the other piece around permanent infrastructure is, under our coastal flooding action plan and our integrated community sustainability plan, to erect a permanent structure there. That, that is one of your highest risk areas for sea level rise and flooding. So, you know, that's why I made the comment about investments in permanent infrastructure as opposed to infrastructure that's, that's movable.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple other comments. I know that there are other beaches in Nova Scotia that are not provincially funded, but there are lots of the same types of issues and probably far worse because of the number of people I think of. I think it's Carters Beach, where you kind of get down there and if there's no place to turn around, you kind of have to back your whole way out. And the garbage is, you know, overflowing all of the time. Is there, do you see that there's anything that we could do for this year or even next year? You know, kind of barring that, you know, the Department of Transportation isn't going to do anything? Like, is, I don't know what short-term, you know, things we could do, if anything. And maybe there's absolutely nothing we can do.
What the municipality of Barrington did, because they have some great beaches, too, was, and they were in a similar situation with some of their beaches, they, they struck up a partnership, right? So, they, they worked with the province and have everybody come to the middle. And in fact, that council developed a beach policy because there are so many beaches in a small amount of area, of land in, in their community. So, you know, my recommendation would be that we, whatever we did, we would do in partnership. And, you know, those items that are seasonal expenses, that we don't even necessarily own the infrastructure. We rent it every season. We look to see if we can provide the services through the human resource hours to clean and service, you know. So, I, you know, I do think, you know, if the province was willing to put up and enforce no parking signs and find a solution to parking, I do see where, you know, it could fit within your culture and your strategies to be part of the solution on comfort services and waste management.
Okay.
Because, you know, we were actively involved in solid waste management and environmental protections, right?
And I know I've asked a few questions, but I'm just going to ask one more. Does the motion, as it stands, cover that type of, you know, what you're suggesting?
If it's counsel's wishes, the letter could indicate your willingness to partner and request a conversation to explore that.
Okay, if, if that's the case, yeah, okay, so Counselor Cushing's indicated that he's in favor of adding that to the, to the list of things that are contained in, in, in the letter. And Counselor Durkey, you're okay with that as well? I think you were the seconder? Oh, Daniel, sorry. My apologies, Counselor Allen, yeah. Okay, so we've got that added. Oh, Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as much as we want to support Johns Cove, because we do, because, you know, and here we are developing Cape Frisbee and it's drawing lots of people. And, you know, it's a very short drive to get out there and I understand why people use it. It's so hard to develop because we're lacking. So even if we do work with the province, you know, I think we're going to, it's going to come back to, well, where can we put anything? And what, there is no room for parking, there is no room, you know, even for porta-potties. Like, where do we do that? And, and that's what I think in the end is going to come back with. And, but I'm certainly willing to, to work with the province to see if there is something we can do. But my fear is that there isn't. And, and so what, the only consideration for that is something is to, my thoughts are to try and encourage people to use the provincial parks that already have the facilities that are required to, to make a beach safe, right? And, and I'm not sure that that's our role, if that's the province's role, whose role is it? But, but, you know, bringing it back to the fact that if we can't get anything done there, you know, what, what else can, can we do to try to, to make our environment safe? Because yes, we do have a number of beaches that have no facilities and, and people do use them. And another one is Sand Beach, which people could actually walk to from town if, if something was done at that beach. But again, it's the lack of space and land and all of those things. So, you know, that's my fear, is that, you know, as much as, yes, I'm certainly willing to talk to the province. But I just think, you know, there's no land to do anything unless someone, someone comes up with, with something, right, at the last minute, but, and you never know, right? You never know. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I'll just make a, a comment. I, I do agree with what everybody said. Oh, my apologies. I'll, I'll finish up. Counselor Cushing, I didn't notice.
Thank you, Trevor. Two things. We are very fortunate that we have a group of volunteers that live on Cape Frisbee who, I would say daily, yes, probably daily, pick up litter along, along that, the whole Highway 304. So, thank you to those, to those people who, who do that. And as for lack of space, lack of land, I always say, every problem has a solution. And it's just a matter of us working with fisheries, the province, parks, environment, especially environment. I think a problem could be solved, but it's going to be willing partner on the province to say, let's look at it, let's see what we can do. NTIR involved with that, too. I know it can be solved.
Thank you, counsel question? And I will add, I, I know that Barrington did have, and at the Stony Island location, they did have quite a bit of property there to, to develop the park.
They did.
I've seen it. But having said that, I, I was thinking in, about the location. And again, thoughts sort of cheap because when you get into the details, that's, that's where the rubber hits the road. But there is a limited amount of space. But I do agree with Counselor Cushing in the sense that, you know, the more, you're more, the more you think about it, the more you push and prod, that sometimes at the end, something, something can, can come out of it. So, so for that reason, I think this is, is good. What I will say is, along the, along the breakwater, along Falls Harbor, I, I'm wondering between that, and I'm not sure how much distance there is, and there's an ability to build out. I mean, when they redo the highway, i- is there an ability to put some parking along the, that would be my thought. It's not ideal. It's not right at, at, at Johns Cove Beach. But along that stretch, if there was some way to do, do parking there. Again, I'm not sure about the ingress, egress on the highway, what the engineering rules are. But, but that, that would be my thought about the, you know, barring being able to purchase a, a piece of land in the area, and that's obviously very constrained, that, that way forward is very constrained, that, that something along that breakwater stretch could be, could be done. Even viewing Falls Harbor is kind of, that would be nice, being able to view it a little bit better, you know, for some folks, because I saw the surfers down there the other, the other day, which was, which was fantastic. So, Counselor Cushing, you have one more comment?
Thank you, Trevor. You, you brought up, one of the possible solutions was along Falls Harbor. Over the years, Joe Public has made certain areas there that they just began to park there. And there's certainly room with, with, with cooperation of fisheries, TIR, and environment, that we could make more parking along that area. And Falls Harbor, I will say, is used, outer Falls Harbor, that's the ocean side, is, is used extensively, too. Especially even this time of year, there, the surfers are out there in this cold weather and whatnot. As long as there's a storm or waves or something, they're out there, right? So, so there is, there is, there are solutions to the problem there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have a moved and seconded motion on the floor, I believe. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. And we're moving on to item nine, 9.1 for action. 9.1.1, letter from Maple Grove Education Center, Reek Crosswalks. And I'll look to our CAO to summarize the contents of the letter. It's essentially broken into two parts, one, part one about, about sidewalks and part two about crosswalks, so.
Right, yep. So I guess counsel, my recommendation would be that we, we respond to the group. And number one, maybe invite them to come in and have a chat with you. This is a new endeavor or initiative in the community. It was new to me. I wasn't aware of it. So it would be good to understand what their mandate is, what their scope is. Secondly, I think, you know, we should respond and indicate to them. I think there's an acknowledgement that the crosswalks are likely a provincial issue just based on the way the letter is written, so we can confirm that. And then on the second letter, we can confirm where you're at with your approved project on the Greenville Road. Talk a little bit about the volunteers who look after our trails for us and, and, you know, the activities they do every year to try and keep Brush and Alder and all that cleared away for safety. And talk a little bit about the process you go through when you evaluate active transportation projects and the types of things you think about as you're choosing how to move forward. That would be my recommendation.
So there's a recommendation from our, our CAO. Is everybody consensus that that's to move forward? Oh, sorry. Counselor Horber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO, for those comments. I was going to ask that we reply. I know they didn't ask for a reply. And normally, we don't reply unless there's an ask. But I think that it would be beneficial, you know, to have them come in and to, you know, have a discussion with us on, you know, what we can do and what we can, you know, what we can't do or, you know, some of those updates that Madam CAO pointed out. And, you know, and to their point about, you know, the Department of Transportation or Department of Highways and us, I know in our accessibility plan, one of the things was, you know, to work or to, I think the word was lobby, the provincial government to, you know, have a conversation about crosswalks. I think that that is important. And, you know, this kind of just highlights it that we have a group of citizens who are engaged enough in their community to point this out to us. So I think that there is value in that. And it kind of, you know, validates for me that, you know, the, the beginning work of the Accessibility Advisory Committee is, you know, isn't just us dreaming up things, you know, to do. It, you know, is definitely something that there is a need for in the community. So, you know, whatever staff can do to get them, you know, get this group in to have a conversation with us would be appreciated. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Horber. Okay. No additional questions there. We'll, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. For information, there's a series of items under 9.2. 9.2.1, fire reporting requirement under the Fire Safety Act. 9.2, there's also increasing NSFM membership dues. Congratulations, acknowledgement from Minister Rushton, Region of Queens. Solid waste management facilities fees and Mariners on main data. And I'll look to her CAO if she wants to comment on any of those there just for information. But was there any additional piece that you wanted to provide to counsel, piece for information?
Sure. So from my desk, what I did, I did take it upon myself when I received the letter from the Office of the Fire Marshal, I did correspond with all the fire chiefs to indicate, you know, that we had received the letter to encourage them to make sure they, they abide by the requirements. And we provided them the material just in case they hadn't received it for whatever reason.
Okay, thank you, Madam CAO. Now I'm more careful with what I'm acknowledging first because I tapped, I pushed the button. I know it's Counselor Horber, the button's on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to the CAO, any comments that she can provide? I know... I know that when I read the email from, or the letter from East Hans, you know, and looking at our NSFM dues, you know, that's our Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, that, you know, they're, they're saying that East Hans had a 41% increase and 14% in the last year. Do you have any data on what we're paying and how, how we can either support, you know, kind of tag on to their ask of, you know, what are we getting for our money?
So, from 2018, 19 to 2021, 22, our dues have increased 29.15%, 12.47 in one year, 4.12 in the second year, and 10.28 in this most recent year. So, you know, the language in the letter is, is, you know, I think good language. You know, it's basically just asking if there could be a rationale provided to explain, you know, what's driving, what's driving the, the dues amounts, for sure. I know it's a decision by the board, for sure, but yeah, a little bit of rationale behind it. The NSFM, it also provides an insurance program, an EAP insurance program for the elected officials. So, we make contributions around $4,000 a year to that for you. And then they offer training and conferences. So, we make, we, we make disbursements to the NSFM for that, but it's provided for, for you in, in our operating budget. So, in the last three years, our disbursements to the NSFM have been $49,000 and change. So, that's dues, that's your EAP program, and that's training and professional development, as well as the contribution that we made to them out of the safe restart money we received because they were integral in, in having Nova Scotia municipalities receive that, so.
Okay, thank you. So, would it be appropriate for me to make a motion that, to regular council, to send a letter to NSFM, asking maybe, I, this, you know, here, this letter, I'm feeling is very well-worded, but maybe our letter can be more specific on what we're, what we're asking for. So, I would make the motion that we correspond with NSFM to, you know, have clarity on the increase in dues. Does that make sense?
Certainly, yeah. So, we have a mover for motion. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Durkey, and we've got a question or comment from?
Not, not in there. I have a question on another subject.
Oh, another subject? Okay, so, okay, well, I'll just, I'll just wait. I'll keep you on there. So, motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And I'll go over to Councillor Cushing. You, you want to make a comment?
Mariners on Main, membership stats. Good information there. Are we on target or is Durham satisfied with what's happening so far with the memberships and, and are we, you know, I, personally, I thought there'd be more involved with it, but I just wanted to know how we're, you know, is, I guess, is the management board satisfied with, with the numbers that are there to date?
Okay, and I'll, I'll look to our CAO perhaps?
I can't speak for the board. There is a board member here who might be able to provide some feedback. What I will say is, is that, you know, the, the business plan that the three councils approved for Mariners on Main, it, it was an estimate and it was based on, I think, some, some reliable data. We had an implication around COVID that we couldn't predict. So, I will say that we didn't exceed the targets, that's for sure. But it is encouraging. That's what I'll say from an administrative perspective.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Councillor Allen?
Turn me on, Trevor. There you go. I will say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually argue a little bit, not argue, let me rephrase that. I'm going to say that we have not met the total we were looking for, for a year, but we have exceeded where they thought we would be at this point.
Yes.
So, you know, I think opening in October, they were hoping, you know, by January, February, to have, I think, around 300 memberships sold, and we were at 316. I think for the year, they're hoping to be in the 400. So, we're still striving to, to see those memberships purchased and, you know, we're, we're hoping we didn't plateau, I guess. We're still hoping that as the year progresses, there will be some more sold. But up to this point, we're, we're kind of on pace. We're, we're on pace for where we'd like to be. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I, just on a personal note, I, I do plan to join at some point in the near future, so. Yeah, I, I just, just, just the whole COVID thing, I'd like to, like to see that. And I think many people may be in that situation. Councillor Horber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to confirm with staff, that we do have Durham scheduled, or we will be scheduling Durham to come in and speak to us in the future?
I believe that was the case, but I'll look to our CAO.
Yep, we're working on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just got to pop back the agenda. Okay, we, we reached the, the end of the, the committee, the whole session, and I will look for maybe a five-minute recess and then we'll move into, into the in-camera. So, can I have a mover for a five-minute recess? Got a mover and share, a seconder, and, and Councillor Allen. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Nobody's opposed to a break.